Welcome and thank you for standing by. At this time, all lines are in a listen-only mode until the question-and-answer portion of today's call. At that time to ask a question, you may do so by pressing * and then 1 on your touch-tone phone. Today's call is being recorded. If you have any objections, you may disconnect at this time. And I will now turn today's call over to Lesi Evans. Ma'am, you may begin.
Good morning and good afternoon. Welcome to the second Money Smart for Small Business Town Hall meeting for 2016. My name is Lesi Paula Evans, and I am the Section Chief for Community Affairs here at the FDIC. And joining me today here in the office is Paula Diaz, who is the MSSD, Money Smart for Small Business, National Point of Contact. So, again, welcome, and would like to just go through the agenda for today. First, we will give you an update on recent Money Smart for Small Business news update, and then we will hear from two Money Smart for Small Business Alliance members. It's very exciting, and we have two guests joining us today. And then, we will wrap it up with the update on new ideas for marketing MSSD. So, we encourage you to ask questions of those presenting today, as well as questions that you have for the FDIC. We will do our best to respond. And, now, I'd like to turn it over to Paula to give us an update on new happenings with MSSD.
Thank you. Before I get it started, I do want to acknowledge our colleagues from the U.S. Small Business Administration, Jack Bianco and Nathaniel Bishop. I know for sure Nathaniel is in the call today. If so, Nathaniel, please feel free to say hi.
Yes, how you all doing? Thank you for having us.
We're doing great.
Thank you. I believe that when I talked with Jack, he wanted to share some news about SBA that are relevant to the participants. Please, go ahead.
Yes, I have Jackie with me now. Happy to join everybody today. This is Jack Bianco from the Small Business Administration. Thank you for participating on today's webinar. We wanted to welcome you, and also highlight that in two weeks, we'll actually be celebrating National Small Business Week throughout the nation. It is May 2nd through the 7th. You can find information on our website at sba.gov. Critical to National Small Business Week are programs like Money Smart for Small Business, the work that FDIC does, other entrepreneurial organizations, and of course, entrepreneurs across the nation. So, if we can, we want to wish everybody an early, happy National Small Business Week. Paula, we'll hand it back over to you on the agenda.
Thank you very much, Jack. We are all celebrating next week, and I know everywhere around the nation, we are coordinating a number of efforts jointly with the FDIC and the SBA. Given that we have so many other participants in the call, we're not going to go around the table today. And before we get it started, I just want to give you a little demonstration about how you can stay engaged during the entire presentation by possibly asking questions and answers by using the Q&amp;A feature. So, on top of your screen, you should be able to see a bar that I am showing right now, and if you click on Q&amp;A, this window that I'm showing right now will pop up. And over here, you can post your question by writing it up, hit Enter, and that way, we will have, we will receive a notification that you wanted to ask a question. This is, of course, in addition to the opportunity to ask questions and answers that we have anticipated throughout the call. Another housekeeping item that I want to remind you of is that all of you are muted, but if you want to ask a question or comment, you can press asterisk 1, and you don't have to identify yourselves when asking a question. Thank you. So, I just wanted to remind you about a few news that hopefully all of you were familiar with already, and that is that we recently launched three modules, Good Fit, Planning, and Cash Flow for Short. We are particularly interested to learn if you're using the Spanish version of Money Smart for Small Business, and please let us know if that is the case. We would love to feature in our upcoming town halls or newsletters as a few opportunities for exposure for the Alliance members, and I am your point of contact for those cases. The FDIC catalog that is shown on slide 5 of the presentation is of the way now to download all of the modules, and so you know, there's also collateral materials available for download in the same catalog. In order to use the catalog, you just need to tie it up with an email, and once you receive the email confirmation, you are ready to download anything you wish. And there's also other Money Smart resources available in there, and if you happen to experience any difficulty downloading the materials, you can still request a CD. Currently, you are only going to be able to see a CD in English, but very shortly, there will be only one bilingual CD going forward for the Money Smart for Small Business. I want to open it up for questions at this point, because I know I've been, there's been so many news lately, and there could be questions.
If you would like to ask a question on the audio, please press * and then 1 on your touch-tone phone. Make sure your phone is unmuted and record your name, as your name is required in order to introduce your question. So, again, that's * and then 1 on your touch-tone phone. It will take just a few moments for any questions to queue up.
Okay. I do not see questions coming into the future, and I guess we can always save questions for later. At this point, Lesi is going to do the honor to introduce our speaker.
So, we changed the order of the presentation. So, the first presentation will be from Sanji Rollins Tucker, from the Minority Business Development Center of the City of Richmond, Virginia. So, this organization is one of the first that adopted the MSSD curriculum, and they've had success offering the entire curriculum, and we are so excited to hear their presentation. Sanji?
Hi, thank you so much. We're, number one, we're excited about being able to talk about how we've been utilizing Money Smart, and how successful it's been here in Richmond, Virginia. We use it with the minority business development through the City of Richmond, where we facilitate the program and the curriculum, targeting anyone, but especially small businesses and minority businesses. We have about 1,200 registered minority businesses in our database, and one of the objectives, of course, is to utilize this to help increase awareness and information and education so that small businesses are, of course, more successful. I've been teaching the classes here in the Richmond, Virginia area. I'm also a Certified Financial Educator and Instructor, have 18 years in the financial industry, have my securities license, and I do financial planning, and so it's kind of a perfect storm for me. And I have to say that I really, really, really enjoy the classes, and I really, really love the curriculum that we're using. So, as we move forward in the City of Richmond, where we're trying, where we're building up small businesses, minorities, women in business, there's a couple of outcomes from that in doing that, and making sure that folks are successful and have a concrete principle and reference background where they can go back to information and collect information so that their business is more successful. We use the Money Smart along with our database, sending it out to our database for businesses that are already out there. We also utilize our partnerships with the local SBA, our State Department, newspapers and word-of-mouth in reference to announcing the Money Smart classes, as well as local newspapers. So, the announcements will go out. We do an eBlack to our database. Normally, SBA or the State of Virginia will also use calendars and say these are some of the classes that are being offered by the City of Richmond Minority Business Development Department, and we will get folks from, you know, all sectors, the emerging business, disadvantaged business, and DVE, to participate in the classes. What they're looking to do is not only, of course, contracting, because we're the City of Richmond, so there's a lot of contractors that want to go through the classes to make sure they're utilizing and doing, running their businesses correctly, but also professional services. So, even though we're doing roads and buildings and schools, there's a lot of professional services, minority businesses in the field of accounting and marketing consultant that utilize these classes. And so, this has become very successful for those businesses in contracting opportunities that are available in the City of Richmond or otherwise, also in the private sector. So, what our program overview contains, we started offering these classes in 2012, and of course, once again, we used, we started with our database that we already had with registered minority businesses in the area. We sent out a schedule, offering three sessions per year. That's where we started, and we do about one module per week. What makes this successful, and some of the keys to the classes and the course, is to treat it like a college course. And so, we email syllabus along with class description, objectives, and also, we make reference to what we expect of the students that are going to register and come to the classes. So, we spell that out in the email, the syllabus. We talk about what the objective is, and then lastly, we talk about a certificate of completion will be awarded to students who have at least 80% attendance of class, and that make-up sessions were also available. So, this makes it, makes it more formalized, makes it feel more like a college course. We also try to set up the classrooms that we use so that it looks like a classroom. So, we really like to treat this as like a college course, and we found that doing it that way, participation actually went up by using that particular setup. Each module that we have, what I've done, one of the, some of the things that I've done also is bringing in some experts to talk about and give real-life experience, also keeps up to date with new stuff that's coming out every single day. So, we have the experts coming in from the banking community, CPAs are really good to come in, and also other local business owners who've gone through the program, or who have just been successful in the program. These, doing that, it will enhance the concepts that the students are learning, and it just gives it a real feel, and it also is very encouraging for students to hear the pros and cons, not only from the instructor, but from some real-life experience that's going out there. So, our normal participant profile really consists of individuals who want to start a business or are deciding to start a business, and that first module that was added this year on basically, you know, just, do you really want to own your own business was great, is a great piece. So, you get a lot of folks who are curious, want to know what are the steps to do in it. So, we'll get individuals, of course, with the idea and who have a concept. But we also have business owners that have been in operation for over 10 years, and they're coming back because they want to relook at how they set up their business, how it's changed, like I said, technology and contacts and things have just changed so quickly. So, we have a really broad range of students that are attending the classes, and they seem to really like the college feel of it as well while we're doing this program. As we have been progressing and as the student population has grown, and we track our completion, we've also started to partner up with the Economic Development Department in the City of Richmond, where we're going to be starting a pilot program in June that will, folks will be able to apply for low-interest loans up to $25,000. And the great thing about Money Smart program is that we're not in the same department, but of course, we share a lot of information, is that they really like this Money Smart program, and so the participants actually are better prepared, we're better preparing them in order to apply for these low-interest loans. So, that's been a great, one of the great success stories that's coming out of Money Smart is the recognition that this is a great program, and the economic development is looking at it and saying, and basically saying, well, you know, we really would, we're really also encouraging folks to go through and participate through the Money Smart and complete it so that they are actually business-ready. So, we keep a database of our students, this is how this has impacted us, and it's impacted what we're doing, by making them business-ready. That's really the key and the objective. We want to make our students business-ready. We have, out of the emails that are sent out, we make it 30 folks register. We usually have averaging between 15 to 20 people actually finishing the entire program. We keep a database of Money Smart students first by utilizing SignUp Genius, a constant contact which asks them all kinds of information, gives us at least an email address, telephone number, and address, so that we can keep up with the activities of our students. We also, one of the things I do is I try to follow up with the students every week, sending them an email while we're in session, reminding them of the next class, reminding them if they missed a class, how they can make up for this class. And we also offer counseling and coaching of, you know, after class or during the week, especially for those students who really want to start and open up a business. One of the features, you know, objectives of the classes is making sure that students start preparing a business plan, and that's really, really important. So, we emphasize that they have to start and have to do a business plan that includes financial data, and so that's one of the coaching and counseling parts. Of course, it's offered in a class, but we try to help them even more and give them some more help with that. We also utilize other sister organizations, of course, SCORE, which is an SBA organization, has a great program as well. So, we bring in everybody to make sure that these folks are successful. We also, the classes provide a lot of networking opportunity for the folks in the class. I think that's one of the values of it, is that you've got other students in there doing other things and other ideas, so they learn a lot. And lastly, want to make sure that they're just business-ready so they can apply for financing if needed, but also to make the decision, you know, if that's the way they want to go, if they need to do bootstrapping, how much more classes they may need to take in order to get to that point. So, this, the, so the classes have been just great for, for our students, and we've just seen an uptick in folks trying to get into the class and attending the class. And then afterwards, of course, what we've gotten, what our average is right now is about, after each class, we've had about two folks that really went for it and have started their business, or we've keeping contact with them, and they have had revenue increasing in their business, and so we're always happy to see that happen. One person opened up a coffee shop. We had another person who has a really niche in the organic liquor industry. So, it's been really great for me, and I think it's been a great experience for the students as well.
Thank you so much, Sanji. And in the screen, we can see the contact information for the Minority Business Development Director, Pat Foster. And I have watched a video of testimonials from MSSD graduates myself. I wanted to share this link with you, and I really encourage you to watch it. It takes six minutes, and it will be very, a very good investment of six minutes of your time, and if you still don't know whether you want to consider the Money Smart for Small Business program, this is definitely going to encourage you. So, thank you, Sanja, again, for the presentation, and I want to open it up for questions.
As a reminder, if you would like to ask a question on the audio, please press * and then 1 on your touch-tone phone and record your name, as your name is required in order to introduce your question. Again, that's * and then 1 on your touch-tone phone, and it will take just a few moments for any questions to queue up.
We have a question in the queue. It says, "Do your sessions emphasize the importance of record-keeping and tax preparation, Sanja?"
Yes, they do. There is a whole class and module on that, on record-keeping, tax preparation, and those are one of the classes that I do the instructions for the class, but I also bring in a CPA just to enhance the class and give up-to-date information on what's going on with taxes, business taxes. And then, we also are, have the ability to bring in our local City of Richmond person who does some, does taxes, business taxes, and business licensing, and they also give really good, really good, clear information. So, I would, I would recommend doing that, and if you don't have that, I would recommend going to those departments and getting the proper paperwork, because that's another thing that we do in the classes, that we, I actually pull wherever I, whatever your local jurisdiction is, the proper paperwork, so the students at least can get accustomed to looking at what it is that they have to do.
Excellent. I have another question. Do you charge anything for your classes?
No, the classes are free. We charge nothing, and we can do that because we're a municipality, but we do not charge anything for these classes. What, and sometimes, not charging means that people are sometimes not as, you know, they don't value it as much. But one of the things that we do is, and I forgot to talk about the graduation ceremony, folks really like a certificate of completion or some kind of graduation ceremony. So, we've, we've not had to charge anything, hope we don't, and I hope, I don't think, I don't foresee us charging in the future.
Yes, I put the pictures of a ceremony with the mayor, I think.
Right, the mayor attends, and also, some city council folks will attend, and they really like it, and so the students love taking pictures with the mayor, and they can take that with them, and we provide pictures and a certification, or a certificate of completion.
Thank you so much. It was an excellent presentation. And in interest of time, I think I'm going to pass on some of the additional questions I got for you, so that you can respond to the interested parties.
Okay.
You can post a Q&amp;A as an attachment to these documents later on in the website. But we're going to now invite our next presenter.
So, our next presenter is Naomi Bechtel, Extension Educator at the Health and Human Services and Family Resource Management Program at the Purdue Extension in Marion County in Indianapolis, Indiana. So, this organization recently utilized our new modules in Money Smart for Small Business, and we're interested to hear about her program and feedback she's forgotten from the participants. Naomi, are you there?
I'm here.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you so much. I'm thrilled to be able to be here, and just as an overview, I want to let you know that these modules were just so well-received, and I think that's just a great set of modules that you're offering to budding entrepreneurs in the community. So, for those of you who aren't familiar with Cooperative Extension, we are actually found in every state in the Union. We actually have a Cooperative Extension office in every county in Indiana, and our job is to transform lives and livelihoods through research-based education, and we do this through Purdue University, our land-grant university. So, my role as an Extension Educator for Family Resource Management is I do personal financial management education to help individuals increase their assets and to learn how to be able to manage those assets on a more manageable basis. And our office is based right here in Indianapolis, and I work with Indianapolis residents, and I've actually been doing training in one form or another for over 20 years. But we just started offering the Money Smart for Small Business modules last December. The next slide, please. The way that we learned about Money Smart for Small Business is that my contact from FDIC Chicago, Jenny Dandridge, came to Indy last June and did a train-to-trainer. So, I recommend if you find that there's going to be one in your community, that you attend it as well, because they do a great job in going through all the modules, giving people an opportunity to actually try them out, to try out some of the exercises and the forms that are found in the modules. So, from that training, I found that this, I thought, would be a great type of financial literacy and capability training that we could offer to residents in Indy. So, within our Cooperative Extension office, we have several different kinds of Extension educators. Two topics range from 4-H Youth Development to, in our case, urban agriculture. And our urban agriculture educator, starting last November, was offering a business planning class to budding urban farmers. And she asked, when I heard that she was doing this, and I was familiar with the Money Smart modules, I asked her if I could come to her class and offer as a follow-up training to those who may be interested, some of the modules, not all of them, but some of the modules, to their participants. So, one evening, I went to one of her classes, and I handed her, and I handed all the participants a sheet that listed all 13 modules, and I said to them, "If you're interested in follow-up training, choose your top five, and from those, I will find the top three, and I will offer them as additional training to you all for a nominal fee." And you'll see that what I did is I offered each module for $15. If they took one, if they took two, it was $20, and if they took three, it was $25. So, they really got a value for taking all three modules. And we took them once a week for three weeks, and they, and from the three modules that were listed on the prior slide, you'll see the three that they thought was most important were cash flow, planning for a healthy business, and time management. Okay, now you can go ahead and forward the slide. What I wanted to show you as well was that for, really important to us in the Extension, obviously, is evaluation, because our whole role is to try to create impact, transform lives, and so we do a lot of evaluation and checking back with people. So, what you see on this slide here is some information when we talked to, we had eight people in the class, and they ranged from not having started their business yet to one person who had had their business now going on two years. And this person, this newly-established farmer, was one who had had his business for about probably a year to year and a half, and when asked what was most important, which the modules are most important to him, he said cash flow. And this is the type of thing that we're finding when talking to people who want to start their own business, is that they've got great ideas, but when it comes to business practices, they just don't know what they're doing because they haven't learned it in school. So, this gentleman thought that the cash flow module is really important to him. He also liked the self-assessment templates as well. So, and he gave a couple suggestions as well as to how it is that we might better be able to offer this program in the future. For example, setting up the cash flow and accounting software. We, as Money Smart educators... We, as, as Money Smart, um, educators, can, it can explain well that you may be wanting to look at something such as Quicken Books for, for business, whereas I know that, that the FDIC themselves cannot offer specific recommendations of software. We can, so that's one of the benefits of, of us being able to offer these classes and to have experts come in, because they can also offer recommendations. Next slide, please. After each module, just so everybody knows, in each module, there is a, a very thorough evaluation sheet, uh, which, as I said earlier, we take very, uh, we take the time to make sure they fill it out. And the testimonials are very important to us, from the cash flow module, the water diagram, I'm going to show that to you, um, to you all, because I made some, I made some, I don't want to say alterations, but, uh, highlights to it, which I think worked out really well for the participants. Smart goals, you think that everybody knows about Smart Goals these days, but it turns out they don't from time, uh, from the time management module, the ABC method, and it, one of the, the best things that we get out of these, um, courses as instructors, is to learn the fact that things that we think are common sense aren't to them. So, they really appreciated being able to hear from other participants as well, things that they're doing that they could implement into their business. Next slide, please. So, what I wanted to show you was how it is that, I, I put in a couple examples of slides that come from the actual modules. So, this is one of the slides that you see from, um, from the cash flow module. And, the way that it shows up, the assets and liabilities, what I did is, I went in to highlight, there's a story that goes along with this module. And so, in the story, it talks about Bob, the money that Bob is contributing, the kind of, uh, the liabilities, the loan that he's going to get. And, I went into the module, into the PowerPoint, and I just created these extra highlights, so, to better highlight it when I'm talking to the participants. In the next slide, this is the cash flow diagram module. And the first time that I looked at it, I thought, "Wow, this is gonna be difficult to explain as-is." So, as you can see, what's happening is that what I would go through, and I would, I added these click-throughs, uh, these PowerPoints. So, as we talked about debt, assets, I highlighted, we talked about money coming in, I added the, I added the arrow for the sales pump. Talking about the bank loan, I highlighted that as well. The, the gold stars that I'm adding, the, the income that comes out, I, I bet that's what they want to end up having. And so, we probably ended up taking a good fifteen, twenty minutes at least on this slide alone. But, this is the area I really felt was most important for our participants to understand, because nobody understands cash flow. It's, it's a foreign concept to them, and this really helped to break it down to them one at a time. So, I was really happy to, to get back the evaluations that said that the cash flow diagram made a big difference to them. So, I bring this up also to mention the fact that, so you can make adjustments on the modules as a way to highlight the information that's there. They don't want you to change the information, but if you see something that you think would be really important to highlight, that you can make that change, um, for your class participants. Um, as far as sustainability goes, this group was one that already knew one another from the previous class, that they had created a Facebook, um, page to stay in contact. It's now been over three months, so I need to get back in contact with them and see what they have done as a follow-up. Um, and then, in general, I would like to be able to offer this again. Indiana is a very big agriculture state, um, and we have a tremendous amount of, of educational courses on how to start, um, a farm, a, a specific type of produce crop. But, there really isn't that as much that is done when it comes to, to business planning and to business concepts. And so, I feel this is a real niche of something that, that we could offer, um, to our budding farmers throughout the state. And there is my contact information. If you've got further questions, you can always email me or give me a call. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Naomi. And I actually do have a couple of questions coming in, and one of them is, you did show us a few slides where you've made changes.
Yes.
You have to make a lot of changes, because the Money Smart for Small Business curriculum was generic. Thank you.
No, you don't. Um, it, this was my choice to make that change, and it really was to the cash flow, that cash flow diagram. The rest of them, you don't, and it, and it's really, it's, for me, it's because if I'm going to have a PowerPoint slide presentation, I want to make it as interactive as possible. And so, that was my way. Yes, you can certainly do things such as just using a, um, a laser pointer, but this way gave them a better visual. So, no, I made just a couple changes, and it was just my choice.
Thank you. Operator, do we have any other questions?
I'm currently showing no questions on the audio.
Thank you. Well, I do have another question coming in, and it says, "If, uh, if you use another specific farm, uh, training, farmer's training in addition to the Money Smart for Small Business?"
Can you repeat that, Paulo? Do I, I don't think I understood that question.
Sure. If you use another training material that was, uh, specific for farmers in addition to the Money Smart for Small Business?
That's a great question, and the answer is no. Because business concepts are business concepts regardless of what you're, uh, whatever it is the product that they're going to eventually be selling. And so, yes, there's certainly, you can, uh, there's a Quicken Books class that, that the farmers can take that, that is geared towards, um, farming communities, but I, but this is the type of materials that we had both farmers and non-farmers in this class, and, and they all understood the concept.
Great. Do you have any more questions?
I'm still showing no questions on the audio.
Thank you very much. So, at this point, I just, I'm sorry.
So, I just wanted to thank both of the Alliance members for participating, uh, in the, uh, Town Hall meeting today. It was terrific. It was, uh, very enlightening, and it really showed how engaged you are with the, with the curriculum, so we so much appreciate it. And so, I can, but I'm gonna go on to, um, uh, talk a little bit about marketing, Money Smart for Small Business, but please, if you have other questions, you can continue to send those in.
Thank you so much, Lacy. I was so focused on business. I, uh, do want to take, um, and a few questions that we had in the previous registration process. There were several questions about marketing Money Smart for Small Business, but I think both our presenters have already done an splendid job on explaining, uh, what they do in order to be successful. And, uh, even though Sanjay doesn't make a big deal of it, registering three, uh, participants at a time is a tremendous accomplishment. I've heard a number of organizations that have a hard time registering a few participants, and having twenty full classes, classes with more than twenty participants every time is a great accomplishment. Um, uh, the, you have before you the slide number twenty-nine with a few pointers about marketing Money Smart for Small Business, and, um, I do want to share one idea that you might have not considered previously, which is the new availability of Money Smart for Small Business in Spanish. Um, that might help Alliance members to work with certain targeted populations in collaboration with organizations such as the Hispanic Chambers of Commerce or the Latin American Consulate. Um, in, marketing the benefits of your Money Smart for Small Business program, uh, it is great to use testimonials. And, uh, once again, I do hope that you watch the video links that you were provided earlier from the Minority Business Development Center from the city of Richmond. Um, and, you should always be sure to describe the training and complementing services in detail. And, uh, I think, uh, once again, a, a practice that we saw today to describe, uh, and provide the course information, looking like a syllabus model, uh, seems to be very successful, and it helps, uh, participants to be engaged and take it seriously, and, uh, having an experience of this, if they were enrolled into a university program. Um, well, I want to make a, this, uh, uh, differentiation between, uh, the words program and, uh, training, so, when I, we, I refer to the Money Smart for Small Business as a program, I mean as a series of coordinated, linked workshops within a timeframe. Um, while some organizations we know provide occasional Money Smart for Small Business workshops, maybe they do it just a couple times a year, um, they might want to recognize that it takes less effort to promote a program, uh, rather than one workshop. And, um, and, and once again, that gives the organization, um, an opportunity to expose themselves, and they begin to build a reputation in the community to be that resource, that go-to place, um, where a business training is provided. You might also come together with local organizations, offering a small business training to create and promote shared calendar of events. Um, um, attendance to a Money Smart for Small Business training may be a requirement or a component of a client intake process. We know that some members do this. Uh, for example, in order to say, uh, business counselor, the prospective client has to attend a good fit of the planning module. Um, some organizations also require completion of financial education workshops for borrowers preparing for a business loan application, just like we heard earlier today. Um, another important thing that we also heard from our presenters today was to make sure that you are, uh, really, um, making it clear, the value of the, of the training, and whether you're cha- you're charging for it or not, um, another, one strategy is to come up with the cost of the, of the course. And, if you are making it available for free, um, maybe considering that participants are aware of the cost that it takes to, uh, put together a training program. Um, I, I've heard from, from a few Alliance members recently that were not successful at signing up enough participants in their class, and, uh, we often have conversations about, um, whether or not the program was well-designed. And, uh, it could be, because aspects, um, that you might have offered might not meet the needs of the audience that you're looking for. And, um, it is good to ask questions to yourselves, and, uh, maybe just directly to your clients, as to what would have made it easier for them to make a decision to sign up to your course. Um, oftentimes, we might have the answers right in front of us, and it is important to always use the feedback from your customers or clients. And that is all I had to share about marketing, and, um, the questions that I have before you are the questions that we always pose to our Alliance members. And, uh, if there are questions coming in, we are, um, you are welcome to, uh, to have a discussion about some of these questions, or, uh, simply keep it, keep them in mind as you, uh, interact with us, with, uh, FDIC Community Affairs staff. Um, you have my, my information, you can always contact me whenever you want to discuss ideas or strategies to implement your Money Smart for Small Business program. I want to remind you one more time that we're very keenly interested in learning about organizations who have, uh, who are, who have plans to provide a Mon- the Money Smart for Small Business in Spanish. Uh, operator, you can open it up for questions, please.
If you would like to ask a, ask a question on the audio, please press star and then one on your touchtone phone and record your name, as your name is required in order to introduce your question. So, again, that's star and then one on your touchtone phone, and it will take just a few moments for any questions to queue up.
Well, while you prepare your questions, send those over to us via the chat function. We, we have an announcement to make by Lacy.
So, we've been getting some questions from, um, uh, a host of people that are interested in Money Smart for Small Business. And, we typically hold these Town Hall meetings just for Alliance members. And, we would, we would like to open up the next meeting, which will be our third quarter meeting, to, uh, people that are not Alliance members but are interested. So, I wanted to let you know that, so that, um, uh, you will know that we hopefully will have a, a much larger group of participants in the next call, uh, that hopefully will, uh, energize them to become Alliance members, so that we can build on our knowledge, uh, of the field, and our knowledge to expand the work that we're all trying to do to, uh, enhance and encourage small businesses to do well. So, that's what we're planning for the next quarterly meeting, and, uh, if you have any thoughts, then we will send out invitations that you can forward to colleagues or partners that you're interested in working with as well, uh, that may be interested in, in the curriculum, or interested, uh, even more, if they're using the curriculum, interested in, in becoming an Alliance member. So, I just wanted to alert you to it, it's, it's actually a one-time opportunity we're doing, uh, to, to, um, really, hopefully, uh, engage more people into the work that you all are doing. Um, so, I wanted to just let you know that today.
Thank you. I want to check with the operator.
I'm currently showing no questions on the audio.
Thank you very much. And then, I, um, there was one question coming in about whether, um, partners can be invited to the upcoming webinar, but I think Lacy already addressed that, uh, question, and the answer is yes. Uh, another question I received is whether, uh, when are we gonna provide our train, the trainer, uh, material and, or a train, the trainer session? And the answer is, you can coordinate that with your, um, with your Community Affairs Specialist contact, uh, locally, or you can always let me know if you are interested in hosting a, a train, the trainer session. Um, we traditionally do not have a lot of resources nationwide, but, uh, whenever we have, um, a, a member contacting us and letting us know, for instance, that they want to train fifteen, uh, partner organizations that will multiply the effect of Money Smart for Small Business and its adoption, we, of course, take those opportunities, and, uh, we don't want to miss those, and we make, uh, we make it work. We find the resources when we're another, and this day and age also, we can use technology to, uh, effectively share the message. Um, we can easily coordinate webinars, if it is, uh, interesting webinars for a particular audience. Well, at this point, I want to check one more time with our, uh, operator, otherwise, we are gonna give you ten free minutes today.
And I still show no questions on the audio.
So, uh, just want to make sure that, uh, I want to check in to see if our colleagues of SBA want to have any parting comments.
Uh, hello, this is Nathaniel. Now, we definitely enjoyed the, uh, presentations. Actually, want to give a special shout-out to the city of Richmond and everything that, uh, Sanjay is doing around inviting our resource partners to offset some of the training that she's doing there. So, it's always great to hear that our SCORE mentors are getting out and providing some in, some additional training, uh, to go along with the, the thirteen modules as well, so it's always great.
And again, I just want to thank the two Alliance members for spending the time to prepare and participate in our Town Hall meeting. It was terrific.
Thank you, once again, and I want to let you know, we already have, I think, uh, three, uh, Alliance members lined up for the next, uh, Town Hall. Please stay tuned. Thank you very much for your participation today.
Thank you.
Bye-bye, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
This does conclude today's conference call. We thank you for your participation, and you may disconnect at this time.
Thank you very much.